Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Take the.
Johnson?
Here.
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 Westmeyer?
Here.
Here.
Here, can we have a forum next to the pleasure allegiance?
I.
Well, if the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, let's see the right of which. Why legislation? Uh, you do as well. Let's look at justice.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move ahead to have number twenty four C day zero four six zero reports of standing committees. Anything like, uh, can you, everybody else? All right. Let's move ahead to have number twenty four C days. Zero four six one and citizens comments not to exceed fifteen minutes of an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the council, step up to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Tim Vincent. I live at one zero seven eight zero East Gulfview Drive in Galena. My name is Tim Vincent. I'm the superintendent of the Galena School District, coming here tonight to respectfully appeal the recent decision made by the zoning board of appeals regarding our proposed digital sign as part of the district monument sign on the new high school. As you know, the school district has always been committed to fostering a strong connection with the Galena community. Key part of that is ensuring that our residents stay informed about school events, student achievements, important community updates. The proposed digital sign would be a vital tool to enhance communication and provide timely updates, especially in a world where traditional forms of communication, including social media, may not always reach everyone. It may not, it will not be used for advertising exclusively school-related purposes, including emergency notifications and celebrations of student success. The school district understands the importance of preserving the aesthetic character of Galena, and we've taken steps to ensure that our proposed sign aligns with those concerns. The sign would be located outside the historical district or commuted, committed to operating responsibly as municipal entity. We believe that this is an opportunity to both enhance communication and celebrate our students and schools in a way that strengthens our community. While we, we do respect the decision of the zoning board of appeals, I must share the outcome of the vote as a two to one decision was affected, was affected by several procedural issues, including absences and recusals. Given the makeup and procedural circumstances of the board that night, I believe a full, I believe a full vote would have led to a drawn result. The appeal is not a reflection of any adversarial intent, rather is only an option available, available to us procedurally. The district is not allowed to bring the same proposal to the zoning board with the rationale of board participation. Our district has had a strong cooperative relationship with the city. We hope to continue working together for the benefit of the entire community. Hope the members of this council reconsider the zoning board's decision and support our initiative to enhance communication, celebrate our students and strengthen our. I'm also available. If you have any questions or concerns while you discuss, discuss the appeal today.
All right.
Thank you.
John Rosenthal, five oh three South Street, Galena, Illinois. I'm here on behalf of the Galena School District. I'm hoping you folks will find it useful for the school to have this sign, keep everybody informed of what's going on. Part of what Tim said with the zoning board group down to four people and then it was down basically to the four and the, the chairman, because I had to recuse myself, had to vote along with the majority. So I think had we had a full board that night, this request by the school district would have passed. So hopefully you folks will pass tonight. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dick Weenan, working on a project on four forty two Ice Street for Victor. And we bought some windows for it in the vinyl. And I got to go to the historic board and they turned me down. I was wondering if there's a way we could get them things to go in because it's already at the warehouse in the view. But no, but and paid for it, like twenty four windows. And I was wondering if we just leave the storm windows on and put the windows on from the inside, if that's something we can prove and move forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay. That's what we had tonight. We have no public hearing. We had the electric commission, so entertain a motion to adjourn as a city council and convene as electric commission.
So moved.
So moved by our person Katie Weenan, second by, um,
Second.
Second by our person Jerry Westmar. Uh, take a vote on that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. All right, item number twenty four C days zero four six two, discussion of possible action on application for a corporate manager license for Rachel, Rachel Robbins, manager for SCI Galena LLC DBA Stony Creek Inn, nine four zero Galena Square Drive. Do I have some type of a motion on this? Auto person Jerry Westmore.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for corporate manager liquor license for Rachel Robbins, manager of SCI Galena LLC DBA Stony Creek Inn, nine forty Galena Square Drive, twenty four C dash zero four six two. Second.
All right, good moving second, it's second by our person Jerry Keeper. Um, discussion, thank you.
She passed her background check, so there's no reason why we couldn't go forward with it.
Yeah. Okay, hearing all the session, let's take a vote on that.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Same.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Just I'm entertain a motion to, uh, come out of the electric commission and reconvene as the city council.
So moved.
So moved by our person Katie Weenan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by our person Tagmeyer. Uh, take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then to consent agenda C eight twenty four days twenty two. There's some type of a motion on that.
I'm over approve consent agenda C twenty four days twenty two. Item twenty four C zero four six three.
Second.
All right, remove second, I can send it down to C eight twenty four days twenty two. Any, uh, questions on any of them? Auto person Tagmeyer?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. There was a, there was a correction to the minutes for item twenty four C dash zero four four four. Um, we did waive the second reading and so that was added back in and I just wanted to mention it. Also, um, uh, before that, um, in the citizens' comments, I think it's just in reviewing it, Amelia Wilson spoke a couple of weeks ago and she said, no more gun retail in private residences. And it was quoted just slightly different, but I just wanted to, just wanted her to know we were paying attention. Um, it was quoted as prevent the establishment or additional gun retail businesses in residential areas. So it's a slight, it's a slight difference. Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that was, uh, that was pointed out and thank you for the correction, Mary Beth. And then also I just had one, uh, question. I know that we have, um, Steve Monahan on the Board of Appeals and the Historic Preservation Commission now and.
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, uh, there's a member that's going to resign from the historical board at the end of the year. And if need be, he'll be filling in on that in January. And in the meantime, we'll be trying to look for somebody to put on the zoning board.
Okay, so.
In his place.
I guess that's what I was trying to.
His place.
In his place, yeah.
So approval term ending. So he'll get replaced on the zoning board?
Yeah.
Okay, but he's still on both right now. I was just trying to understand it.
He's not actually on both right now. He'll be on both after the first year.
So does that put us in lower numbers or are we missing people?
Yes.
That's all I'm trying to figure out. I guess.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
One's resigning that's a year. He's showing in on both positions. We need somebody to take his position because he'll be going to the historical board permanently.
So we.
We are missing.
We have an open position on the zoning board of appeals. I guess that's what I was just trying to clarify. Thank you so much.
Some names and stuff too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, anything else on that consent agenda?
No, thank you.
All right. All right, um, take a vote.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead done finished business. Item number twenty four C days zero four four two. The second reading and possible approval of the twenty fourth tax levy ordinance for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty five. You'll have a motion on the second reading. Auto person Tagmeyer.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the second reading for the approval of the twenty twenty four tax levy ordinance for taxes to be collected in twenty twenty five. Do I need to say the amount? Thank you so much for the levy. That's what I was looking for. One million, five hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and forty four, which freezes the rate to the current year amount.
Okay, that's second.
Second.
Second by our person C. Any more discussion on this? We have this up last meeting. All right, take a roll call on that, Mary Beth.
Weenan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead to new business. I have number twenty four C days zero four six nine, discussion of possible action on appeal by contractor Galena Builders and homeowner Victor two, I have a. To real, um, of a decision by the Historical Preservation Commission to deny the installation of vinyl windows at four four two North Ice Street. There's some subtle motion on this.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, order person Tagmeyer, or.
Weenan?
Weenan? Okay, do I have any type of a motion on this? Auto person C Johnson.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we send this back to the Historic Preservation Commission.
And, uh, for what reason?
And, uh, let them decide what they would like to do as far as the appeal. Um, I don't think it's fair for our commission to go against their original rule on this particular item.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, and I think we can do that because there's new information with the addition of the storm windows, correct? So there is a new
New one.
way that he would, he would do it. So I think we're in our, in our, I don't know, rights or it makes sense to send it back to have it reviewed with that new information, which change, which doesn't change things as much as far as how it looks.
Okay, um, the discussion. I, I, I'll be along with that. Uh, we can send it back and see once it, um, if it works up and up. Builders and the homeowners, I mean, the house is, it's got vinyl siding on it now. It's probably been on there since the nineties, but, uh, you know, will make any difference. The storm windows are not on or not, I don't, but anyway. We got a motion to send it back to the zoning or the sort of preservation board. Any other questions on this, a discussion on this?
You need a second for that.
I thought you seconded.
Okay, second. Uh, and the only thing is I just want to make, I just want to make sure that, that folks are part of the discussion was that uh, the builder wasn't sure that, didn't know that it was in the, you know, historic district, which I'm not sure how that happens, or I don't know all the details as far as the, you know, the vinyl, because if the vinyl was put on before and was approved before, but once again, I just, I just feel like this needs to be, it needs to be clear so these decisions are made the same way, case by case.
Auto person Johnson, do you have your head up?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say that by doubling down on wrong, it's not right, right? If there's vinyl on the side of the house, it's already incorrect for a historic home. Um, I, I find it hard to believe that with that neighborhood with that, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm going to stop talking.
All right, are you done?
Yeah.
What's your matter?
Auto person Jerry.
I think we're gonna get the same results if we send it back to, uh, this historical, um, committee board and I think we're all pretty much in agreement that he's got vinyl siding. If he puts these windows in, puts the storm windows in, uh, to me, that, that should satisfy him getting those windows put in and hopefully any contractor that's gonna do any work in the city could come to city hall and ask if it's in the historical district, which half the town is, um, you know, so I think we're gonna get the same answer from the historical lead board that we, that we got the other day.
So what are you, so what are you saying?
I think we should just. I don't, I don't think enough. I think we should let it go through.
With the storm windows.
Yeah.
So the house that's got the foundation, that's limestone, that's an obvious historic house and it's already got vinyl siding. We're gonna go ahead and let them do something else that's not put this type of window in the house. That's what we're saying. The whole um, Historic Preservation Commission, um, should be looking at all of these houses. The entire block has, you know, some houses have been pristinely done, redone. And then there are houses that have aluminum windows and there's a house that's got, you know, vinyl siding, but this was done in the nineties. How did that get through?
A lot of things got through in the nineties.
Well, this is not the nineties anymore then. Why are we allowing it to happen again? Why are we, why are we, why does this contractor who's obviously grown up in Galena not understand where the historic homes are and are not?
Jerry?
Yeah, um, that ordinance was probably written in the nineties and that's, you know, it, it probably was siding was probably put on before that. If he puts a storm on us on, I don't see a problem with it. Um, but we have to get something from city hall that these guys have to come in and see before they order a door or a window to, uh, check and make sure it's, it's okay with the, with the zoning board, with the historic zoning board. I don't, I, I agree with Westy. I don't know.
So then can we place a fine for the difference between the cost of these windows and then the windows that would be the store?
Well. All right.
I don't.
Go ahead, auto person Tagmeyer.
I don't think we're, we're not, Cindy and I aren't denying the appeal straight out. We're saying there's new information which allows them to go back and we're just sort of, correct me if I'm wrong, but saying that the, the, that the HPC should look at this again and that it should be, you know, their decision then to change their, their action and their vote on it. So that because he's saying do it a slightly different way than was originally presented.
Yes, I, you know, everybody understands that and we, uh, I'd make the thought that we should pass it like the way it's with the storm winds on it and you're thinking that way. So right now, um, I, I would be willing to let them go back to the zoning. I don't like, I think I'm kind of, or historical. I think it's just kind of what you said. I think it'll come back to us the way it is tonight. But we can definitely try it if they, um, go ahead.
We can try it, but.
Yeah.
I'm going to guarantee it'll come back. It's only more.
I don't know. There's a timeline on anything, but I, they'll be meeting next month, so.
Yeah, I'm sure they want to get them in before the winter finally gets here.
Yeah. So right now, you want to read the, the motion stated, um.
The motion was to send it back to the Historic Preservation Commission?
With the new information that was, uh, just, uh, said here tonight. Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All right. Take a roll call on that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
No.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
I'll give it a shot. Yes.
Runner?
All right, motion passed. All right. All right, then let's, uh, send that back with the new information in regards to the storm windows that was presented to us tonight. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty four.
Probably bring Katie back.
I'm sorry, what?
We should probably bring Katie back. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Katie Weenan.
All right, then.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm just, I'm thinking. Sorry. Thank you. Did you hear me say your name?
Were you out there listening, Katie?
Can't hear anything.
All right. Welcome back. All right, let's move ahead to have number twenty four C days zero four seven zero, discussion of possible action on an appeal by the Galena Unit School District of a zoning board appeals decision to deny a variations, a variance to an electronic message sign in front of the high school. There's a type of a motion.
Mayor. We're sending everything back. I'd like to make a motion that we send this appeal back to the zoning board of appeals and, uh, let them figure it out and rewrite the ordinance. So we know what's legal and what isn't legal. And how big the sign can be, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, good. Just to send it back to the zoning board for review on, uh, on the ordinance. I need a second on that motion. Anybody?
Second.
Second by, all right, now discussion. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, let's send it back and let them guys figure it out and then, uh, bring it back to us, you know, size and how legal it's gonna be. There are other businesses up there that probably will come to us with the same, with the same, um, thing that they want at their business. So there's gotta be some rules.
Auto person Tagmeyer.
This is, this is different. This is not in the historic district. This was a vote that was two to one. This is not like the, the previous thing that we just voted on and it, the, 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 what's, what's it called? What's your position about the chairperson? Sorry. No, no, the superintendent and the chairperson of the actual committee that this would go through, right? If, if they had had the right number of people there who could vote. So this, I, I disagree with the motion and I think we should approve. I think we should approve the appeal and allow them for electronic messaging in front of the high school. And I think there's multiple reasons. One about the vote, one, it's not in the historic district, one, it's a community benefit. And also if that grant goes through, this is emergency location and we would want signage for people to know how to get there and be able to see it.
Jerry?
I'm all for the sign myself. I have been since the very beginning, but in our ordinance right now, the way our ordinance was written back in two thousand and three, um, I think it needs to be updated so they can add this new information into the zoning ordinance and, uh, and get it passed so we don't have any buddy coming back on us and saying, what about me? What about me? What about me? And I think it just needs to, uh, go back to zoning, have them rewrite the ordinance and update it and it will get, it'll get passed.
Yeah.
How long does it take to rewrite the ordinance though? It's like.
Well, it'll take a little bit.
Can I ask?
The school isn't gonna be dealt for three years. You know, so I mean, they have time.
Can I have a question?
Go ahead. Ask them, but they also.
Oh, second to us, two questions.
Step up there.
Tim?
They're calling you up for questions.
What is the earliest that this sign would be put in?
So it's the, the monument sign would be the last thing that's, that, that gets done. This would be the, uh, fall of twenty, the summer, the fall of two twenty seven.
Okay, so if we sent this back to zoning, then we have enough time to get it approved.
Yeah, depending on the, uh, legalities of rewriting the ordinance, I think we have hinges on that or so, I mean, our time. Assuming that it would be less than two and a half years.
Oh, yeah, less than. We're slow, not gonna.
The, the problem we have now are ordinance as is prohibited. So you can ask for a variance. So who, everybody else can ask for a variance. I know your understanding, I think we're all in favor of having it. This is why we want to get this amended in the order in regards to outside of the historical district, uh, the signage, the size of it, the blinking lights and all this stuff to make it legal because there's gonna be other people that's gonna ask for this.
Sure. Would, uh, changing the ordinance, uh, to the municipal, uh, entity outside of the historical district? Um, would that be diff, changing the ordinance, would that be different than a tax amendment?
Yeah.
Say something.
Somebody, yeah, but say it to them.
Okay.
Yeah. That way I, I, I think we all feel comfortable doing it that way.
Okay.
Instead of doing a variance part.
Okay, so, um, Jonathan is the contact person to adjust the ordinance and I got, what level is my involvement? Since it's in the, the ordinance adjustment.
Probably very little, Tim. Uh, it'll be between the, the, uh, building and zoning administrator and the board, the zoning board and also the lawyer in regards to writing the legalities of it. So, you know, I know what we're, you know, what you're looking at and I think everybody said here about what we're thinking.
Sure.
How it should fit.
And I, you know, I guess the, the school district involvement would be, uh, the parameters that have already been set. I, I think the third one I missed outside of municipal, um, outside of the historical district was no advertising was the third parameter in which a digital sign would be allowed. And I think that narrows the scope to one. Um, which is probably true.
Because there'll be other questions, uh, we rewrite it, but then that.
Yeah.
Every case.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Terry.
You got a question for them?
Yeah, um, you might be asked how big the sign's gonna be from the, from the zoning board.
Sure, sure. We might do that. It's a, the, the total sign, we're not asking a variance on the total sign size. Uh, I believe the current ordinance is, uh, is under a hundred square feet.
Yeah.
We're under, we're not asking for an ordinance on the sign or anything. The digital portion is eight, eight foot across by two and a half tall.
See, that's the other thing we're looking at, sign against places like where you're at, or the size of them.
Sure.
That displays and.
Yep. That, that's.
Hundred square feet, though.
They've asked that before, yeah, but.
Yeah. The sign, I, I said faces north and west, so it shouldn't have a lot of effect on houses like there.
So, no, and, and one of the questions was asked that, uh, we've, we've actually been at two different, uh, zoning meetings back to back. And, uh, one of them was, was, uh, family doing it at night. Um, I think it was from ten AM to six, or I'm sorry, from ten PM to six A. Um, in order to, you know, that is a residential neighborhood and we're, we're willing to work with or whatever to, to a good compromise for this. We just think it's good for the community.
Yeah. Okay, any other question? Jim, just that moment, Chris, will you?
I have a question for Tim. I just have a comment. I, I guess I just don't understand why we can't leave both and like, why can't we approve it today and then also send it back to the zoning, um, you know, like for all, all purposes, Casey says electronic sign that changes when gas prices change. So I don't know how, obviously this is different in school. Um, electronic, not in historic district, no advertising. I, if those are our loose parameters right now, like obviously the school district could operate under that and then send it back. Zoning can, from what I understand, it was an ordinance in two thousand and three, like we can get a new ordinance. This is how ordinances get rewritten, but I, I don't, and obviously there's time, like it's not a time crunch kind of thing, but, um, I think it would behoove us to move forward with approving it and then letting them continue their plan, so.
Hey, and you know, your session, go ahead.
Is that legal, Joe, to do that? What's that?
What, what?
Let it go through now and then change the ordinance?
Well, you, you have the authority.
I know we do, but it just doesn't seem like it's, uh, it's going it backwards. Yeah.
I mean, you could argue it either way. You have the right to send it back like you're gonna do it. You could take the appeal and make your decision tonight and still rewrite the ordinance. But I would rather have it straight before we get approval.
So.
I would personally.
So as it is tonight, like we're voting on what the current ordinance is today, like not voting on sending it back. So while I get that. While I get that.
Well.
This is for what's right now.
Jerry would have to amend his. Motion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care which way we do it. We just have to do it legally. Yes.
Well, you know, you don't, you don't understand. The ordinance is written and it's prohibited, period. I say, let's get the ordinance straight. So I, I feel much better if we do it that way. You know, I think we're all in agreement that the school would, would definitely benefit from having something like this and the community would benefit. And, you know, Tim says, you know, it'll take, you know, maybe two and a half years before they need it.
Yeah, it's going to go through. We just need to get this thing rewritten. Uh. Yeah, like I said, do it legally.
That's my turn, but we got right now, you got a, uh, a motion out there, Jerry? Without any amendments, is that correct? Okay. Read the motion.
Send it.
The motion was to send it back to the zoning board to let them figure out rewriting the ordinance.
In regards to some of the things that we talked about here outside the historical district. The new information that we talked about here. All right, without any other discussion.
I, I, I don't understand. I'm sorry. I, I, I know some people haven't had dinner yet, but I don't understand why. Why we're sending it back. And, and then, and then what, what happens? They, they can change the ordinance? The, or we have to change the ordinance. So why are we saying we're sending it back to them to change the ordinance when we, this body is the, it, we are the people that change the ordinance? So we could say.
On both that prohibit right now.
I understand that, but the motion.
We.
The motion says to send it back to have them change the ordinance. That's what Jerry just said.
Can we make it a motion?
Some of the things that you guys talked about, we talked about, you know, put it in there.
But can we make a motion to give, give them a special use permit? To, to go ahead with the sign?
I, I don't, I mean, you, I don't think we can do that, can you, Joe?
No, I don't think you can.
We can't do it?
Don't we have to either approve or deny the appeal? And, and then go from there? I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want this school, like how do they come back if we're, how do they come back if they're only allowed to appeal so many times? Or is this, or is this just, do, do you know what I'm saying? Like it's not, it doesn't seem to be a clear motion as to what's. What's happening.
Would they also, Jerry?
What's the difference if it goes back? We rewrite the ordinance to make it legal. They bring it back to us, we approve it. And then we put this back on the agenda and it's going to pass in. A month or two. But then it's down in writing that, hey, this is the correct way to do it. Right now, like the mayor said, it's. It's against the rule. It's against the ordinance right now. So.
Okay, I want to.
I want to get it, I want to get it passed too, but I just want to make sure it's done.
Right. Just one thing I'm getting, uh, Jonathan, did you want something to say? Jonathan Miller, uh, is our building that, uh, zoning administrator and now he was, uh.
Zoning administrator. If you guys send it back to the zoning board, the zoning board rewrites the ordinance and you guys are the final living body. If we rewrite the. There is no more appeal. It's just at that point, we rewrite it to work for them to have a message board. The appeal just goes away and there's, they just get assigned.
But.
They don't come back.
No.
Not have to come back.
They don't come back. Just the ordinance itself will come back to you. So we, as the zoning board would rewrite the ordinance, that's what you're asking us to do. So we would rewrite it, the zoning board would take a vote on that ordinance. And then it would come back to you guys to approve that ordinance. So you get, just like the other ordinance you do tonight, where you'd have the first, second reading of the ordinance. And then if that ordinance is then approved, there is no more appeal. They would just get assigned.
All right.
And there's a public hearing.
So, so, yeah. Yeah, the zoning board would hold a public hearing on you.
Yes, they would be a public hearing.
And, yeah, there's just, there's really at that point, no more involvement by the school. As long as they meet the guidelines that we set on the new ordinance, they would just get it on.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, um. Any other, any other discussion on this motion? All right, let's take a roll call on that motion.
Johnson? Yes? Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes. Motion carries. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven one. It's the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter seventy-eight of the Gleaner Code of Orders. To, to install a yield sign for the northbound traffic on Upper Third Street between Adam Street and Jefferson Street. They have a motion on this.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first reading with the second of an ordinance amending chapter seventy-eight of the Gleaner Code of Ordinances to install yield sign. Northbound traffic on Upper Third Street between Adam Street and Jefferson Street at a number twenty-four C zero four. Seven one.
All right, so move, say, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven one. It's discussion on this. We had discussed it in the pictures last week in regards to the yield sign, the placement of it. Okay. Take a roll call on that.
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead, item number twenty-four C day zero four seven two. It's discussion of possible action on a grant application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four Access Improvement Project. A motion on that. All persons, you need to get it up.
Yes.
Big Tegmeyer.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, approve the grant application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the twenty twenty-four Access Improvement Project, item twenty-four C dash zero four seven two. Second.
All right, it's been moving, say, line, I'm twenty-four C day zero four seven two. Any discussion on this? It's a grant that was, uh.
I have just one comment. You know, it has to do with like, um, sidewalks and streets and it would be nice to. Get out of the focus that's been on downtown a lot for sidewalks. I think there's a lot of sidewalks in the community that, that are needed. So I don't know, we can widen that scope a little bit.
Yes, that's true.
Uh, I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to say that this grant itself was a grant that we were sort of given. And we're, we're retroactively applying the thirty-one thousand dollars to the, to the sidewalks that have already been done because it's an easier way to use the fund. So it's not that we. We applied for thirty-one thousand dollars to do sidewalks. It was money that was given to us. From the state and we just had, it was a lot easier red tape wise to do it this way.
All right, any other discussion on that? I take roll call.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-four C. Day zero four seven three. It's a discussion of possible action on a contract. With Vortex International for a new water slide at the LST Virtue Water Park. I have a motion on this one. Our person, Jerry Westman.
I'll make a motion to approve the action on a contract. With Vortex International for a new water slide at the LST Virtue Water Park, twenty-four C dash zero four seven three. Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven three, uh, discussion.
Can't wait.
Greatly underbid, so that was nice or under budget, so.
Yeah. Well, I know we've been having troubles with the slide, so it's been there since day one and.
Looks pretty nice.
Had some, um. Problems with it all year, uh. You know, minor. Cuts out, uh, on some swimmers, but, um. Yeah, it's definitely needed. It's, uh, expensive, but, um. It's something that we do for the citizens.
Yeah, I, I was, um, I was happy to learn that, that some, some things that we need to replace with the stairs in. Regardless and with the roof are part of this and that would have been a separate thing if we hadn't replaced the slide anyway. So it's sort of. Repairs are folded into the new slides so that, that was good to learn.
Yeah, from that area, definitely needed help also. Okay, uh, take roll on that, Mary Beth.
Westman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven four. It's the water and sewer operation and maintenance. Monthly report from US Water. Tonight we have Andrew here with us. Andrew?
Good evening. Thanks for being here. My name is Andrew Schuler. Andrew's report over to us. Rational means for the city of Kingswater Sewer October. Uh, the wastewater, uh, plant treated fifteen point six million gallons for October. Uh, we produced, uh, fourteen point seven million gallons of. Of water, uh, which came out to be, uh, sixty-nine percent filled. The budget for October looked good. We are to continue working five star locates, uh, for them and, uh. Normal O N M maintenance for the water and sewer system. Uh, this is the end of the report of October. Be happy to answer any questions or questions.
Well, definitely see that sixty-nine percent, Andy. And then.
Yeah.
Down to thirty percent on, on revenue and stuff.
We have had some positive, um, response to a couple of meters that we have replaced, repaired ones, uh, so, um, hopefully, you know, it's even better next month. We thought there was. Air in one of the meters, but after, um, working with Carl, um, on main, uh, they hooked the meter up and it was accurate. So there should be some more water be addressed.
Is, is there a way to get a detail breakdown? I think I asked for, um, last meeting of like the new meters that are going in.
Um, we're working on that. I think we only have five installed right now.
Okay.
Uh, so until we get more, um, then I'd assume looking on that personally. And, uh, yeah, there should be some. Work on that.
So could we at least get something on the five?
I, yes.
Okay, because I think, I mean, I commend you for switching from, I mean, we were over fifty percent almost of not getting revenue for it. So. We've made some really great strides, but would like to see if that is a thing and then how we can tap that in the future.
We do have a spreadsheet built for those that have already been installed and we'll add the new ones to that as well. So we're looking at. Year to year water. And then going back five years as well. And as Andrew said, we've seen at least one of those industrial sized meters register some real massive water use that was not being accounted for. And that's in part what we're seeing on the, um. Lost, lost water while it's shrinking in this report.
Going forward, you want me to put that in this report for you guys to see?
I mean, I do. I know, I know Pam does.
Yeah, you're awesome. Not a problem.
Any other questions at this time for Andrew? Okay, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, let's move ahead, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven five. It's the warrant. Do I have a motion on your warrant?
Make a motion to approve the warrants. I remember twenty-four C zero four seven five.
Okay, um, any second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second to pay the warrants. Uh, any questions on any of the bills? Take a roll call, Mary Beth.
Meehan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. So we had that number twenty-four C day zero four seven six. All the persons comments, all the persons, Jerry, uh, Westman.
Good weekend last weekend and hopefully the weather will stay that way. So. We'll have good weekends the rest of the year. That's all.
Okay, all the person, uh. All the person, Kiefer.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to bring up, I think, uh. As Wesley's talking about the weather and the good weekends, um, I think living windows is a short couple of weeks upon us. Um. I love that our events are successful in Galena. I think living windows last year almost was a safety hazard. It was beautiful weekend. There was a lot of people out, people walking the street. So. I don't know. That's more in your guys' realm of running the city, but I think it, it needs a, a topic, not to the Gleaner parade conversation, but. It definitely needs some more attention than it got last year, so. Um, yeah, it's beautiful we got.
All right, the laws.
Yeah, Katie.
Katie.
All the person, Jerry Kiefer.
Yeah, just one thing. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas and going, oh, I was going to sing that. I think, yeah. Um, with all the, the decorations up and everything, really looks nice on Main Street.
Yeah, it does. Yeah. Uh, thank you. All the person, City Johnson.
I was also going to compliment how beautiful town looks and I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Everyone's family. Yeah.
All right, thanks, City. All, all the person, City, thank you.
I did write holiday lights, but I'm not talking about it. Okay, um, I would like to send some, um. Some thoughts and good vibes out to our fellow councilperson, Pam Bernstein. Um, and then also, um. There's an open position in the zoning board of appeals. So if you're interested in that, make sure you turn in your application. Um. And. As we were talking on some of the approvals, I, I would love to see a way for us to have, as we're working with the comprehensive plan, for us to have. A way for residents who are trying to maintain their historic houses, have a fund maybe that they could use so that when it costs. You know, three times more to get the proper windows, that there's a way for, for, you know, individual residents to, to be able to afford to do that. So I would love to look into how we might. Help folks, uh, with that. Um, and then with the ordinance change that will happen sometime in the future for the lights. Uh, by the high school, I also wanted to note that I, I noticed that, uh, vet associates a number of times. They ask for just lighting on their sign, so I do expect them to come back. So I, and I, I think that that makes sense. But just for us to be aware, as we're changing, changing ordinances, what it means for area businesses and how to navigate that. The lights are beautiful. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thanks. All right. Let's move ahead then, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven seven. City administrative news report.
Thank you. Uh, last week we received a check for forty-one thousand plus from the Gleaner. And this is nothing new because they gift us, uh, donations every year, but just wanted to call them out and thank them. They've put money toward a lot of our city projects, Turner Hall, a lot of money, Depot Restoration, Grant Park Renovation. So thank you to them. And second, we mentioned the lights. Want to thank the fire department who's out there tonight, hanging those lights and the, and the wreaths. And downtown business association who strings the lights around the pole. And the heat club who strings the lights around the wreaths. So a lot of people involved in making Galena look beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, then let's move ahead, I have number twenty-four C day zero four seven eight. I believe everybody covered what I wanted to say, but I. Wishing, uh, everybody a happy Thanksgiving and don't, uh, remember that Santa Claus is coming to town and, and, um, he's, I like to say, all the person, Bernstein and others. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Someone?
Second.
All right, moving second, you're in, take a roll call.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Meehan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
And good luck tomorrow.